Is that important to breathe?
Might be.
Sometimes, sometimes. But not always.
Is there a future in it?
There's important times not to breathe, like when you're in the swimming pool underwater. That would be one of the times not to breathe.
That's the old run for the rest of the day at least.
Silence and fresh fire.
I had the mother special.
Probably better than all of us.
Cheaper anyway. That was nothing, nothing too big. It was just yellow hamburger, green beans and I had third, but my sister had made some blueberry. Gobbler stuff.
Dessert.
Dessert, so I had some.
Where's yours?
Oh, I forgot. Oh, that's I had it in the bag for you. It tipped over.
It's only in a bag.
Why, I know.
It, it just didn't make it to the courthouse.
Yeah.
All the way across.
So your grandpa good cook?
My grandpa?
Yeah.
Oh, he does pretty good. I was at my parents'.
Oh, you was at your parents'.
Yeah.
I didn't know they lived in town.
Yeah, they live, you know where birthday God preschool is?
Yeah.
Just two blocks west of there. That's where I grew up.
Well, that is where you.
Most of my life. Mom and I lived in Laverne my first five years, but she got remarried. And I'll go on since then.
So you had to walk to school?
I did walk to school for kindergarten, first grade. Notly don't even have first grade there.
Did you have to walk to high school then too?
I did. I had to walk all the way to the kitchen.
You still.
That's right.
You're not walking home school.
Walked all the way to the kitchen.
Walked laps around the house.
Some guys will be like, I walked up hill both ways, five miles, he walked upstairs.
I actually went further to get on the bus than I did go to country school. Oh, you're good. Cause the country school was right before the intersection where the bus picked us up.
So why didn't you just walk to school? Did you have to get on the bus?
No, after they closed country school.
Oh.
Oh, then everyone was mad at me through school because our lane was so long, they legally had to come up to our, up to our yard to pick us up.
Oh.
So everyone else that had a lane under half a mile would have to walk. At the end of their lane, and I got three quarters of a mile for a lane, so they had to come to the yard.
Well, I actually just picked him up because he was on the short end. I see, well, they decided to hear you.
Only so many, only certain buses went out that way.
Yeah, not five.
Oh.
I thought that route stopped at your place.
No, I'm not. Don't want to clear your place.
I never.
Started at your place.
I never did ride anybody's, except for field.
How are you doing today?
Well, how are you?
Good.
You guys are all back right on time for lunch.
Still working, huh?
Oh, yes. Take it with you.
Going down 10%, right?
Not much.
What?
It's a point of discussion.
We need those care.
Um, probably not.
I am going to rip apart these times. If you don't like this, I'm not sure.
It's gonna be dangerous.
Hi, Kira. I want to do an okay.
Sir. They're not meeting.
I can just go with the next real way to listen to. We'll be ready to go. I think that I can.
The fact they won't let you.
By myself. Oh, no. Okay, so while you have the binders in front of you, sorry, this pulls into the office book. Uh, we're going to mostly talk through the items on the left of the folder. The items on the right of the folder are simply there for legality. So there's the disclosure document and another document relative to your stop block policy. So that applies to the initial rate, the final rates we should have in the next couple of weeks. Generally, they release the first 10 days of April for your seven one timeframe. So the reason there's initial and final rates is if there is something catastrophic that happens between the, when we release the initial rates and the final, those will be adjusted. Also, the inverse happens. If somebody that's a really high dollar claimant comes off the plan within that timeframe, those rates will be adjusted as well. So it is kind of works in your favor in both of those directions. So we're going to focus on the items on the left, as I said. And first up, we're going to talk about your plan performance. I know that Doug had already released kind of the initial renewal to you guys during previous conference reasons. And we're really going to focus on the stop loss, but I do want to walk you through all of the documents just so we have an opportunity to answer questions or see if there's anything that you guys would like more information about. I'm just gonna pull those up. My team sent me with one less folder than I need, which is totally fine. So they have everything I need. Oh, no, you're totally fine. I have everything I need online, so you can use that to take notes. I will give those those. Oh, my gosh, no, they're fine. They're fine. I'm wondering if they put it on my chair and I walked out. Just bought it once. Oh, boy. Okay.
You, these are gonna be hard to look at because they're, when you flip it over, the left side's upside down.
Upside down.
Yeah.
Actually, we just turn over.
Well, yeah, flip the whole thing back and forth.
I'll go slow. Just tell everyone that's.
Yeah, so.
Well, and I found it odd too that it, it prepared all the longer pages. Normally it doesn't letter page, so.
Yeah, I, I thought they were typically.
Yeah, I'm not sure what was going on over there this morning, but.
Yeah, that's how they're supposed to flip.
I just took staples out so.
That's a good point. I will probably do that too. Or all the other, the other packet, the one, the long one, that way. Yeah. If you, if you open it the way it's stapled, the left side will be upside down. So that's why Josh took staples out.
Baby, that's like, go like this.
Yep.
Okay, so the executive summary is normally a 35 page document, which gives a little bit too much information to walk through in an hour meeting. So what we've done is condensed this down to the most important documents for you to be able to review through this. We also have this electronically. If you would like to see all 35 pages of that, that is fully accessible to you. Um, so just let me know and we can send that as a follow up. So this document is walking through your data as incurred and paid in the timelines that the underwriters are using to assess your renewal. So it doesn't match calendar year. It doesn't match your renewal timeframe. And that's why. It's because they pulled the data through the end of November so that then they're able to analyze it in the month of December and release it to us in January. So if you'll flip over for me, but this page. So when we look at your planned per ten minutes, it's the one with the blue arrow on the top. Um, looking at your current allowed per member per year, you're at $9,729. That's a 51% change from the prior period. And is a 37% variance from our benchmark. So if we take that 51% and break that out into inpatient outpatient office and pharmacy, your inpatient changed 81% per member per year. That is driven by both cost and utilization. So as you can see, inpatient cost went up 40% and utilization went up 26%. So that's telling us that the people that were inpatients were more expensive than what we had seen. So they were there for more intensive procedures. Outpatient is the reverse story. So it's a 44% increase. That was driven by more utilization than by costs. So more bodies went to have outpatient procedures than what we saw in the previous period. Office went up 129%. That's driven by high dollar procedures that were done in the office setting. So cancer treatment done in an office setting, not at a hospital. So that's what's driving that large increase. And pharmacy went up 14%. You, the cost is down, utilization is up. So more prescriptions are being filled. They're less expensive than what we saw from the previous periods. So that overall brings you to that 51% increase. So that's how that's divvied out by place of service. When we look over on the right, that shows you inpatient costs. We'll start there. It's the top line. From your current period, the year before, year before that, and the year before that. So we're looking at four total timeframes compared to the benchmark. So this year, your current inpatient cost is $1,239 per member per year. That's per belly button per year. Compared to our benchmark of $1,000. You look last year, you were at 681, year before that, 835, and the year before that, 1,182. So in a group of this size, there is going to be large fluctuations of that just because of one person having super high dollar claims is going to drive some of that. Um, questions on that page? Other, just in case you look at this later, other is anything that doesn't fit in one of the other categories. So it's generally durable medical equipment, ambulance rides, um, unique situations that don't fit into the other categories. Okay, next page. Looking at, this one says executive summary at the top, just in case we keep your items apart like we did. Uh, the cost trends, breaking that out into total paid medical and pharmacy. So your total paid went from $2,094 last year to 2,000, $2,094. Couldn't that be nice? Um, up to 3.031 million. Medical was driving the majority of that. So it went from 1.6 to 2.5. And pharmacy went up from 476,000 to 524. When we break those out compared to the benchmarks, the benchmark is other government entities, colleges, cities, county governments and school districts. So that's when we break that up into our book of business comparisons. You guys are just a little bit under our benchmark on some things and over on others, but the best way to look at this is the line graph on the right, bar graph on the right. So you guys are orange and our benchmark is blue. So as you can see, you've had prior year minus two, you were above the benchmark. Prior year minus one, you started to level out against the benchmark. And then this year you had a big jump again. That's driven by those high dollar claimants, which we'll see in a few more slides. Okay. All right. The next is network. So what is well marketing for you since we had a 51% increase in those overall claims? You saved $2.9 million in the current period by well marks network arrangements. So that ends up being a 51% um, savings within health due to our provider arrangements. That is mostly driven by inpatient and outpatient services. So that's why that seems so much larger than last year. If you remember, inpatient spiked pretty severely. That's where we see our deepest discounts is with the hospitals that we have in our network. The network utilization is amazing. Everybody stayed in the network. You didn't have anybody that stepped out of the network this time. Usually if someone goes out of network, it's not purposeful. Um, so there was a dialysis clinic in Fort Dodge as an example, a couple of years ago that went out of network contractually. They didn't want to accept our contracts, so they were out of network. Members may have been going there for years, didn't want to disrupt their care, maybe didn't even know that they stepped out of network. Um, but then we were able to get them back in the network and that resolved itself. So there are situations like that where sometimes that happens. It's not intentional. Other times, maybe somebody was in an accident and they didn't have a choice. They just had to go to the closest place and that happened to be out of network. So that's generally what happens. Okay, then the next couple of slides, I've broken out office visits, outpatient and inpatient services, just so you guys can see how those are trending and what those are driven by. I do want to focus on the call out bullets on the bottom right. Um, our analysts have made sure to break down that information and call up the most important things. So when looking at office visits, benign cancerous tumors accounted for 34% of the allowed charges and only 2.5% of the visits. So they were just a very high costly thing that were being done in office setting. Um, the visits per thousand increased 61% and we're still below the benchmark. So they make that per thousand to normalize it across our entire book of business. So we're not just comparing small groups. Uh, so when we're looking at how you guys performed against everyone, those visits did go up significantly in the current period. The allowed per visit went up 789%. That is skewed by the high dollar services that are being done in the office setting. It's not that everyone had that jump. Um, radiotherapy, chemotherapy and aftercare accounted for 24% of the allowed charges. So what's that telling us? The majority of office visits were being driven by those cancer treatments and follow up services. So one or two large claimants are skewing that. But it is interesting to look at the chart at the top right. Breaking out office visits into primary care providers, non-primary care providers, which is generally specialists, chiropractors, labs, mental health, therapy, urgent care and telehealth. Telehealth is the least costly service of all, but it's the least utilized. So the more we can get people comfortable with telehealth, the, the better plan performance is going to be. So something that we will continue to promote and encourage people to use through the communication strategies with your HR team. Um, mental health did have quite a few visits at 378. We are seeing those on the rise. Um, just because COVID kind of brought any mental health services to the forefront of people's minds. And so people are accessing more of those services just across the board within our book of business, not only you guys. And then PCP visits continues to be the top driver out of ECP and non-PCP and chiropractors. Primary care physicians. That's if you just go to your local doctor. Yeah. Um, and then chiropractors are your most popular type of service, which we have known for a while around here, which is perfectly fine. Questions on that? Next is outpatient. Um, outpatient also is being driven by some high dollar services that are being done in an outpatient setting. So using the call out bullets on the right. Genital urinary conditions accounted for 26% of the allowed charges and 21% of the visits. It did decrease 16% and is still above the benchmark. The allowed per visit increased 25%. That's someone in an end stage renal situation. So that's what that genital urinary is. It's for their kidneys. Bones muscles livin' is accounted for the next top category in outpatient. That's very common for what we see for your particular group, um, as well as every group within our book of business. Anything that's within your musculoskeletal system falls into here. Um, somebody tore rotator cuff. They had knee replacement. They broke an ankle. That falls into that category. So it always is one of the top ones to see because it's so broad. But then within the chart, it does break outpatient into medical, surgical, obstetrical, mental health, chemical dependency, and then the total of all of those, comparing them to each one of the years and then against the benchmark. So this year for the total for outpatient, it did go down from what we saw claimants per thousand from last year. But then the pricing did go up and that's being driven once again by that um, end stage renal. That's a very expensive procedure. Okay, inpatient, similar thing. Um, what's driving the utilization of inpatient and why did we see a jump from last year? Heart specials conditions accounted for 51% of the allowed charges within the inpatient category and 36% of the admits. And then that was followed by benign cancerous tumors. So as we saw from the office visit treatments, people were inpatient for some surgical procedures and then they were transferred to an in, for, saying it, to an office setting for the ongoing. All right. Then jumping to pharmacy, this continues to be a hot topic. Um, I don't know if you watched the soonly reunion, but pharmacy was something that was definitely addressed there. We all know that pharmacy costs are through the roof. We have one of the leading industries here for research and development for new drugs and treatment strategies. So that continues to be something that's going to be an ongoing cost. But what do we do as your formulary and your pharmacy benefit manager to try to reduce some of those costs? We do have some pretty intensive options that we can explore if you guys are interested. As it stands today, you don't have a high utilization of people on specialty meds, which is generally where we see the largest thing for your buck, if you will, by putting in those interventions. Um, if you think step therapy reductions of access to certain medications, making sure we're capitalizing on copay card programs and getting the money back to you guys, not just to the member, there are certain levers that we can turn on. Um, it may be something that we want to explore in the next couple of years since you don't have a super high utilization of specialty. It's easier to put in a program before it disrupts members' care than after. So if it is something that you guys want to know more about, we can definitely explore that. And I'm happy to come back again and even bring our pharmacy team to help you answer questions. Um, as it stands today, I don't think you guys need to do a bunch of that right now, but it's something that we want to continue to look at down the road. Uh, so what I mean by that, your drug costs account for 17% of the total allowed per member per year costs compared to our benchmark of 25. So you guys are under what we're seeing total pharmacy charges. However, that is due to the fact that you don't have very many people taking specialty drugs. Um, if you notice the highlights on the charge amount in the chart on the left, specialty medications, allowed charges per member per year for you guys are $1,000 compared to the benchmark of 887 compared to non-specialty medication at $577 compared to the benchmark of 918. When we look at the actual number of people taking those medications per thousand, specialty was at 51 and non-specialty was at 2,500. So you just don't have that many people taking specialty drugs. Those that are taking specialty drugs are more expensive than what we see in other um, industries. That's broken out on the next chart within your slides of which specialty medications people are taking. So there is a call out bullet on the previous slide that says top specialty medications were XANTI, HUMIRA and Avenox pen and accounted for 51% of all the pharmacy claims paid. So three medications, and if you look down at the bottom, X, XANTI has one person taking that medication at $12,000 script. So very high dollar drug that member needs that for their quality of life. That's why it's been approved through your formulary and through our step therapy programs. Um, HUMIRA pen is the next one. One person taking that at $5,000 a script, almost six. The Avenox pen at 6,900. So the XANTI um, is for that end stage renal. So it helps control some of the side effects of what's going on with that. Um, having only one person on these high dollar drugs is helping you. When you have two or three or four, um, it can get out of control very quickly with pharmacy charges. Um, but once again, they're on patent, they're specialty drugs. There is no other option. So all we can do is work with the formulary, within the formulary to work with the product producer of those drugs to help drag down some of those costs and get a deeper discount. Which is what we do on her behalf behind the scenes. Okay. All right. Um, then the next is looking at your top claimants over 50,000. So as I said, your top claimant was the chronic kidney disease at $887,000. Most of that is driven by outpatient procedures. So that's that um, dialysis. Then the cancer, which is driven by drug, $183,000 in drug charges. This is only showing you anything over 50. If you flip two pages with me to this document. This shows you anything currently over $10,000. So this doesn't tell you who it is, but it is, it's sorted by charges. So where it becomes interesting is it's not difficult to get to a $10,000 charge nowadays with the cost of healthcare. Um, going in and having a healthy delivery of a live born infant is generally $40,000. So it's very easy to get over 10. Um, one group that I met with, that's not much bigger than you guys, had five pages, charges over $10,000. So there's just um, a large opportunity on the C charges there. Now, if you'll jump with me to this page and this page. The summary on the rate page. So I'm going to start with the rate page, just because this one's pretty cut and dry. So we are estimating, leaving the plan exactly the same, that your estimated suggested rates, which is midway down the page. This includes all fixed fees and claim charges would be around 3.213 million. Your attachment points, which would be 125% above that. So this is in a catastrophic situation, the most you guys would pay, what we recommend you budget is 3.674 million. Which ends up being about a 10% increase from what you're paying currently. So I'm going to walk you through the details of how our underwriters came to those numbers based upon this page. So as I said, the annual suggested rates for the new renewal are a 10.09% increase. That is taking your annual projected health and pharmacy charges at 3.213 million or $2,231 per contract per month. When we break that out into fixed fees and claims, your fixed fees are going up 27.39%. That is driven predominantly by the stop loss premium increase. The projected claims are a 1.843 million dollar charge or a flat trend. So we are recommending no change to claims compared to our well-marked book of business trend at 8%. So as far as claims go, you guys are performing really well. Your staff loss, however, is 23, 29% higher than what we're seeing last year. So breaking that out a little bit further down below. Your demographics are 63% male. That's right in line with what we saw last year. 80% are enrolled in family plans, just slightly lower than last year. 71% are over the age of 45, which is right in line with last year. There are nine people over the age of 65 on the plan. There were 10 at last year's renewal. And you guys did approve putting in the EGRP, which is the employer group retiree product. So that gives people the. So that gives people the option as they're starting to age off of your plan and enter into retirement, they do have a Medicare option to enroll in that you guys have chosen to offer um on their behalf. So it makes it easier for that transition into retirement when there's not the unknown of what to choose. The expected claims are staying flat. Your claims are running at eighty-two percent actual to expected. Your overall three-year average is at seventy-four percent. That's really great. The group trend is nine point eight four percent, which is above the Wellmark experience trend of eight. The renewal decision is to quote a zero based on your three-year actual to expected plan performance. When our underwriters look at your projections, they take three years' worth of data, so this year, last year, and then trending forward, and they do a combination of those three numbers and came to that zero percent renewal. Your administrative fees, PBM fee, and aggregate stop-loss fees are all at table percentages for groups of your size, so that's just a standard increase across our book of business to help cover our expenses for doing business. The network access fee is how much utilization you have of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Network outside of the state of Iowa. That gets adjusted based upon actual utilization year over year. And you don't have anyone anymore or any less utilization using that, so it's remaining flat for this year. And that will get adjusted next year if necessary, based upon your actual utilization. Question on those components so far. Okay, um the next is your individual stop-loss, so this is going to take the next couple of pages just to make sure we walk through all the details and you guys are familiar with how our underwriters came to those figures. So over the last three periods, your stop-loss premiums, so what you've paid to Wellmark, is one point eight six two million compared to the two point seven million that we have paid out on your behalf. So we've paid out a loss of forty-eight percent. So that's where they're saying we need to level this out a little bit and make sure that we're um giving you increases year over year that are fair, but also help to cover the actual expenses that you guys have of claims going out the door. Currently, your stop-loss level is at thirty-five thousand, so that will come into play in a couple of other documents that we'll review in a minute. There are ten members on the fifty percent individual stop-loss report with six exceeding the stop-loss. So each and every month, our finance team puts together a document of how many people are halfway to that thirty-five thousand dollar stop-loss mark. As you increase your stop-loss levels, that amount increases as well. So if you were at a fifty thousand, anyone that gets to twenty-five or more is on that report. So it helps you to be able to track month over month how many people are getting close to hitting their stop-loss level. So there were ten on that individual fifty percent report and six over. Last year's renewal is currently at twenty-four members on the fifty percent report and sixteen exceeding with one month left in your twelve eighteen confidence. So if you'll flip the page for me, there are currently four additional members that could complete above the thirty-five stop-loss level. Based on the ongoing risk and the review of the premium to credit ratio, we're quoting an increase of twenty-nine point six nine percent. So when they're looking at the actual figures, they estimate within the actuarial values how many people would get to ten thousand and how many people would get to thirty-five thousand based upon groups of your size. So we were expecting twenty-eight members over ten thousand and you had forty this year. There were thirty-three last year and thirty-nine the year before. I have been asked before why that number has remained at ten thousand, since we know medical costs and pharmacy costs are going up so high. That has just been historically what our actuarial factors have been to help us estimate ongoing risk. So when you start to look at claims over ten thousand, that gives you a general idea of this is gonna be something that will be ongoing or keep increasing or if it's something that was a one-time episodic thing. So if you think about pregnancy as example, once they deliver that baby, they're not gonna have another forty thousand dollar charge unless they got unlucky and get pregnant again right away. But most of the time, that's a, you can have a ten thousand dollar, forty thousand dollar charge and it's one time. Um versus, do they have ongoing end-stage renal disease? And that's gonna be something that we need to continue to monitor and make you aware of. When we look at the over thirty-five thousand, we would expect eight. You had sixteen this year, eleven the year before, and twelve the year before that, which is helping to create that forty-eight percent deficit and premium to credit ratio. And they do also, I think is interesting, give us a different chart that shows us how many people were repeating members. So of the forty that were over ten thousand, how many of them were part of the thirty-three from the year before? And half of them, so fifty-five percent uh were current year only, and then the, I guess, forty-five percent roughly half um had been repeating. So it's just an interesting way to look at that to help you guys know where our underwriters are coming from and get an idea of ongoing risk. Now, if you'll turn the page for me again, this is everyone that our underwriters are using to assess the risk and assign that increased dollar amount or how much we think we're gonna have to pay out next year versus how much you guys are going to be paying next year. So that end-stage renal disease person was eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars this year, three hundred and eighty-six dollar thousand last year, and four hundred and twenty-five thousand the year before. That person is eligible for Medicare as a four, one, and twenty-three. So within end-stage renal disease, you have to have that condition for thirty-six months before Medicare will pick up and pay as primary. So that doesn't matter age-wise, you could be twenty-five. And once you go into that end-stage renal diagnosis, you have thirty-six months, and then the government starts to pick up your claims exposure. So that person will be coming off here in a month. The second claimant is still active as well, prostate cancer. Expected to be ongoing from one hundred to two hundred thousand next year. The next one is cancer, one hundred to two hundred thousand next year. The fourth one down isn't supposed to be high-dollar claimant next year. They're gonna be up to twenty-five thousand. Then the fifth one is three to, two to three hundred thousand. And your end-stage renal person could be five hundred thousand to a million. So if they have other things going on, you guys are paying a secondary, there could be some ongoing charges there.
But that five hundred thousand to a million is the one that will come off at four one?
Yeah, Medicare will start paying primary on that person for one. And that continues on then to the back page as well. So we wanted to look at, instead of paying Wellmark the eight hundred and eighty-four dollars in premium to maintain the thirty-five thousand dollar stop-loss level, should we look at increasing that stop-loss and instead of paying premium to us, maybe you bet on yourselves? And what we mean by that is demonstrating that on this page. So working with Doug and Donna, um we went back and did some initial discussions about what would it do to increase the stop-loss level a little bit or a lot? Um on our fully insured block of business, the pooling point is seventy-five thousand. So that's where our underwriters are recommending we get the majority of our groups. Our self-funded client should be around that seventy-five thousand dollar individual stop-loss level. That's a large jump for you guys to go from thirty-five to seventy-five. So I wouldn't recommend we do that the first year. Um it is important to note, when you make a change, you can never go backwards. So if we bump it up to forty-five, that becomes our baseline for the remainder of your time in your stop-loss contract with Wellmark. Um so that's something we need to weigh out as well, is do we want to increase that? Is it worth it? Or do we want to stay where we are? So I'm gonna walk you through the method of my madness on this chart. So on the left is the individual stop-loss amount. So currently, in our twenty-twenty-two contract, we're at thirty-five thousand, paying six hundred and eighty-two dollars per contract per month, so per employee per month. That ends up being nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. The renewal for twenty-twenty-three, keeping that at thirty-five thousand, is eight hundred and eighty-four dollars per month or a twenty-nine percent increase, bringing your premium to one point two million. If we were to increase that stop-loss to forty-five thousand, it drops the premium to seven hundred and ninety-five dollars per contract per month for a sixteen percent increase, bringing that annual total to one point one four five million. That ends up being a difference of a hundred and sixty-three thousand versus the renewal at two hundred and ninety-one thousand. So looking again at the fifty thousand dollar individual stop-loss level at a premium of seven fifty-one, it's a ten percent change, one point oh eight two million or ninety-nine, seven sixty-three increase for current. Bumping that to fifty-five thousand is seven hundred and thirteen dollars, a four point six percent increase at one point oh two seven million or a forty-five thousand dollar increase for current. If we take that all the way to sixty thousand, it's six hundred and eighty-two dollars or a point one two percent increase in change, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars or one thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars annually in premium. So that's just premium. That is just built into those fixed fees. So if we are moving those that stop-loss level up, that's going to also increase your claims exposure. Because you're now responsible for those claims over forty-five, over thirty-five thousand until you reach forty-five thousand, as an example. That is shown in the bottom chart. So where there's red, that's how many more dollars you're going to be spending for those folks. So if we move, so I'll just walk from the left to the right to make sure you guys are following my mathematical genius over here. So claims over thirty-five thousand, I listed out everyone that was on the um stop-loss report in the underwriter notes. I've listed out how many dollars were over thirty-five thousand today. So the first claimant was one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars above thirty-five versus the other one was eight hundred and fifty-two thousand over the thirty-five thousand dollar stop-loss. So taking that to six, to forty-five thousand, you're gonna pay ten thousand dollars more automatically on all those people in red plus the seventeen sixty-five of the first claimant that's at thirty-six thousand. So that brings your claims exposure automatically to a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars more than what you're paying today. If we move it to fifty thousand dollars, same methodology, it's automatically fifteen thousand dollars for all those people noted in red that are above fifty thousand. The black ones are the numbers that are under fifty thousand, but still more than what you're paying today. Bringing our total to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of extra claims. The fifty-five thousand dollar stop-loss level is a two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar claims exposure. And taking it to sixty is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars claims exposure. So that's just same same, right? If everyone performed exactly how they did today, you would have paid that much more in claims dollars. Actuarially, they have given us those numbers from the underwriter up at the top again. So additional paid claims is broken out because what the underwriters have done is they've taken the individual stop-loss premium level and built that into fixed fees, but then they've taken your expected claims and built in a ratio actuarially of the one fifty-one noted below, the two fourteen, the two sixty-one, and the two ninety-nine. So actuarially, they're not gonna say it's gonna be exactly the same as it was today. There's gonna be some trend built in, some run out. So they're saying that your expected claims with your renewal would be one point eight four three million. Is everybody following where I am? Okay. If we move that to forty-five thousand, it becomes one point nine six four million or a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar change. Which is a little bit lower than what we calculated below the same same. So in that situation, you could win, right? Because you're, you're paying less in claims than what we think you could below. If we move it to fifty, it's at two point oh one five million or a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in increased claims. At fifty-five, you're at two point oh six oh million or two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in increased claims. And at sixty, you're at two point one oh two million or a two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar additional claims exposure. So here's where it all kind of comes together. You're okay. So this is where this kind of
I gotta, I gotta log into another meeting here.
So this is where it all kind of comes together, is the green on the far right and the column just right next to it. So actuarially, our underwriters are saying there's not a huge change to you guys. You're still gonna pay the ten percent roughly, right? So if you, if you move it to the forty-five, it's still gonna be right at about the same as what we're predicting right now.
I can't see regain or lose much doing anything.
Well, there's, the max is a one percent difference at sixty thousand if we're lucky. And that's if everyone repeats, but if it's if it's worse, we would be in a much better position to stay the same. And if it's better than last year, we'd be better.
So is there a case for divorce?
So that's where it's kind of, it's kind of a variable, right? Do you guys want to bet on yourselves that your claims will come in a little bit under what our underwriters are saying? Or do you just wanna be safe and pay the premium to us and know that you're capped at thirty-five?
If, if we ran the same stuff with the rates from last year and the high co, the stop-loss claimants um from the year before with what actually happened, it looks like we would be in a much better place to keep the stop-loss where it's at. Because our stop-loss, our, our numbers over thirty-five went above your projections.
They, they realize that they're paying a lot of our, our bills.
Yeah. So But that's where we, we received the benefit of it last year.
Yes, and the year before, the year before. So it, it's honest to goodness, I it's up to you. If this was a slam dunk actuarially, it's like, you're gonna save ten percent, I'd say let's do it. But I don't know.
It depends upon
I, I don't, I don't
and who is gonna take advantage of going on Medicare instead of being on the county. That's gonna make the difference.
Or
or die. Yeah.
Are, are we required to provide health insurance to spouses in the law?
What is your question?
Are we required to provide health
Not according to ACA.
Okay, that's
Dependence up to age twenty-six.
Okay.
This father is is your question, does Kasey County have to pay for
Family
The insurance for a family? Is that your question?
We do with the
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're
Across the street, they have bargaining rights yet.
Yeah, the sheriffs.
It's just secondary
Well, they, they don't have a union, but they still have those divisions in the law, don't they? That they can, they can negotiate that. They can negotiate health insurance, yeah.
No, they don't.
They, they don't have the union that
But they're
Their social service, but that doesn't
She talking to sheriff or the office staff?
Sure.
Sure. They, they can't go. They gave up with the union.
I thought they could still negotiate for that stuff, even though they are not a official union.
No.
Okay.
So your point was?
Just asking a question.
Of your forty people over ten thousand, seventeen were spouses.
So just under half. Basically, pretty, pretty much fifty-fifty. That was seventeen oh forty?
Yeah, seventeen forty.
And that was over ten or over thirty-five?
Over ten. So I just did a quick count based on this chart that shows you.
Some of them are kind of young.
It's been like age 5 to 19, fracture shoulder and upper. All that. Yeah, and then there's another front page, 5 to 19, bottom of the page, 55,000, 54,000.
And then a blood infection.
Oh.
The Our most expensive member talked about going on Medicare? Is that automatic or do they have to request it?
It's automatic.
So are they, do they understand, will they understand today that that's going to happen?
Well, first, primary and our secretary, because they'll still be
Not just
Sure, they'll still be on your insurance, but that person is over age 65. But we do communicate them, that to them, yes, our care managers call out to those folks. Do they actively take our phone calls? That's the unknown, most of the time, no.
So, so it's Wellmark's response. Like, it isn't necessarily Medicare that is contacting them and saying, hey, this
I believe Medicare does contact them as well, but that is something that we actively pursue for them to try to
Do, do you send letters too or just phone calls?
Yes. They don't necessarily see anything. Yes.
And that's, that's taken into account on the financial side of it for us because they will be coming off of our bills, right? Or the, the majority, they'll, Medicare will be primary, you said, right?
But yes, there are certain things that with Medicare, you will still pay the majority of, it's just the way that that works. So that's why they're saying that there still could be up to $5,000, $500,000 worth of exposure, even when that person becomes
So that 500 to a million is our exposure yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, there could be the possibility when we get the final rates that they know that that person has actively enrolled in Medicare and that will change. So there, there are certain times. So there's two components of that.
Okay.
And they act, put a certain
Yes.
See as a
Well, you guys technically are that since they're still active.
Right, but if they would, if they went on
Yes. Yes.
And that's one of those things we can't, we can't communicate with them about switching over to Medicare, right?
Spouse employee. Yeah, so this one is, it's a little tricky. So I went through this with another group a couple of years ago. And so there's this way that you need to finesse the messaging that makes it known you're not encouraging them to leave. You're just letting them know that it's an option. You have to be really careful about that because you don't want to be seen as forcing someone off of your active plan when they're an eligible person. But sharing information never must just happen.
We're talking individuals, we have respect of individuals.
Correct.
You start.
This is not patient sensitive information, right?
I'm not talking.
Yeah, but actually
I would I would feel comfortable.
Don't have to talk about it anymore.
It doesn't have to go all the place. It's common.
Anytime there is someone that's enrolled that's eligible for additional programming with Wellmark, we do reach out to them. So if you're eligible for care coordination, if they're eligible for disease management, our folks do actively try to contact them. That's always an encouragement that we want people to participate. And when they are reached out to, it's never in a condescending way. It's just making sure we're sharing information with folks. So I'll say when I was pregnant, for example, they would actively reach out to me and say, did you know this? Or have you tried that? Or did you know about this program? So that it's kind of helpful things, I feel like, to engage someone in their care. So always encourage people to answer the phone, return our phone calls. We're generally trying to help give people additional information, so, in any of these things. So when my mom, my mom had breast cancer, don't mind sharing that with you, but she had a care coordinator that helped us to help her navigate her care because when you're going through chemotherapy, it's just a lot, it's a lot. She just didn't feel really great a lot of the times. And so they were able to communicate with my dad and help make sure that he knew that they could help schedule appointments or follow-up things. And that was just really nice as well. So the hospitals have that service to you as well as Wellmark. So if there are any ongoing things, we encourage people to use all the resources that you have at your fingertips. It does help. So So the big thing that I need to know from you guys is, looking at your stop-loss numbers, are you interested in bumping that up? Are you wanting to leave at the same? It the closer we get to that 75,000, the more you start to see a reduction in the premium values. So the amount that you pay us on a monthly basis does go down, the closer you get to that $75,000 mark. Which is what's seen there in that 68294 compared to the 68214 by bumping it to 60. So, but it just depends. Are you willing to, are you more comfortable taking on the premium costs of paying Wellmark that $35,000 protection? Or would you like to pay that out in claims and maybe not have that same exposure? So
A quick question. If we were to go to a 10%, what would that do to the premium?
10% what? What do you, what?
Deductible on everything.
Like employees paying the 10% deductible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, a premium.
Premium, yeah. It would make no difference on your end.
No.
Yeah, because you, we'd still have the, you'd have your suggested rates, we'd have the rates we set, whatever, based that way. And then I think the 10% you're looking at would be something on our side of the equation.
It would, it would
It'd be between, between us and the employees.
Right, it would lower this number.
No.
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 So
It would
Expected
If you look at this chart on this page.
Yeah.
The admin, NAF, and stop-loss fees in the middle on this line here.
Somewhere I'll find it.
Right here.
And go all the way over to the right, so they've calculated that out. So you will pay Wellmark 1.370 million.
Correct.
That's, that's determined, those are fixed fees. So whatever you guys do internally with the premiums that you charge your members, that just determines how you pay that value to us. Is it county dollars or is it employee dollars?
Like on the, on the single plan, correct me if I'm wrong on any point here, but on the single plan, you got about 1,000 bucks suggested rates.
Right.
So if we had 10% paid by the employees, it would be 100 out of the 1,000 would be paid by employees.
Right.
We would pay the other 900, but they still get the 1,000
Correct.
Total, or the, the fund still gets the 1,000 at the end of the day.
Yeah, family plan would be 250 bucks.
Yeah.
Basically.
Um, but if, that would be something on our side.
Yeah, I'm just trying. It would lower the cost.
It would lower the cost to the county, not the plan cost.
Right.
It would lower the tax burden in that regard.
Right. That's where I'm trying to get.
Yeah, yeah. I, I see what you're coming or
Keeping the same quality of insurance, but lowering the exposure to the county.
Yeah, the, the expense.
The expense.
Because our, our plan would have the same exposure.
Right.
But the expense to the county in the form of tax dollars would be lower in that scenario, Roger.
Yeah, so what's total premium paid by county now?
That's our business, I guess. I'd rather share it up.
Not exactly certain. So we tell you what our suggested attachment points are in our funding. What you guys use to actually determine the amount paid by your employees is based upon several different factors. How much money do you have in your fund? How much are you within your contract negotiations? So I don't know that. I just know what actuarially we're saying the budget and have available to pay medical plans and pharmacy plans.
Yep.
But the good news is your overall plan stage left, so we're expecting a similar performance for next year. It's just making sure the stop-loss level is appropriately funded.
Stop, stop loss.
Yeah. Yeah. Well
Well
Yes, or at least say similar, but we've been underfunding.
Right.
So
Somebody else has been subsidizing Kusuk County.
I'd like to keep it that way.
Right, yeah. We all would, but we had a pretty big jump last year as well, so that's partly why I included the chart on this front page. In 2019, your stop-loss premiums were $310 per employee per month, and now they're at $884. So you, last year it jumped from 680 to, well, sorry, from 558 to 680. So we've had a couple, three or four years of pretty big increases.
But even, even if you go to the 60,000 level, we still don't quite get back to what we're at now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just
Yeah.
The increase in cost. So we're not, I, I don't see that we're going to solve our problem by changing stop-loss. Just
Yeah.
Cost of health and the status of health for our employees.
That was all I had on my time to speak for the day. I always feel like people see me come, they're like
Run the, run the other direction.
It's not that bad.
Well, the good news is we're below, we've been below what you project all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. So, no new little situations around here, just a couple of high dollar things going on, which is very common.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, kid.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much.
We're just hoping now, yeah, happy to come back if you guys have questions or want to keep some other things.
Yes.
Don't mind windshield time at all? Probably the one time I eat it, she's just what I want to listen to on the radio.
Of course.
Yeah.
Have a safe trip back.
Thank you. See you all anyways. I don't know if I told you guys, but I always stop at Tom's thumb before God's finger. Best pies. I don't know what they give them. We're there to live.
Yes.
So now my coworkers are like, are you going to bring us some pie?
So you're, so you're picking up a whole pie on the way back?
Work and everybody gets the pie.
There you go.
Oh, I don't, but I should. I'd be like, really? Right. Thank you.
Have a good one.
If she, you, if she, you passed out, it's better news than what she gives us. About
Well start looking at our free, what we're doing right now, and we are the last two months, and then we continue to pay more
Right.
than what we are contributing to the fund.
But I don't think we have to go over 10%.
I would have to see what our
Projected ending balances.
Right, so projected ending balances. For some suggested contributions in order to see what we ran.
Doug, do you still have the file for this big spreadsheet from last year? Or do you update this and keep it rolling on the same form?
It's all the same.
Well, yeah.
How it ended 2022 is above there, the history, so it's total.
Yeah, and maybe it's on the
We gained 16.29%.
I'll pull up the sheets you gave us here, and what I'm looking for might be on there.
Sooner or later, we're going to have to have a figure in what we want to do with premium.
So for the the individual stop-loss that they're saying 844 right now for this year, that's what I was curious, how much of that was last year? And I don't remember if that was on one of these sheets or not for the past. Oh, yeah, 6 682. I'll need to look at these more outside here, but
Because you're, you're making assumptions here on people that are going to be sick or not sick next year.
Well, yeah, but that's kind of what we have to you gamble one way or the other. If you think everyone's going to magically get, if you think everyone's going to magically get healthy next year, let's raise it, but I don't see that.
If you're going to go on Medicare or something different.
Yeah, but that's
See that either.
That's the one that's
High cost.
So you won't, you won't have stop-loss that way.
This is for watching the metrics.
Still no.
I guess, are we needing to do anything else today or is that it, review info or?
Besides something soon so we can
You've got to get it.
Create in our budget.
Yeah, we got to get that number in the budget.
Um
Did we talk 2% or 5%?
I put on the, on the request to be on the Echanga.
Yes.
For those be able to take care of those today. I have to go downstairs to get my information. I don't know, is there any other questions you want on?
When, when do you want to make a decision on the premium?
Well, I think I, I really believe that there's a couple of things that can be done. One, raise that stop-loss. Back I don't remember, we kind of went partially self-funded in the year 2000. If we would have listened to the actuaries there, we wouldn't have ever been able to go self-funded because they would have been telling us, this is how much it's going to cost, this is how much it's going to cost. What's happened is over these years, instead of paying Wellmark and having a $3 million balance, Kusuk County and having a $3 million balance, to see the county has a $3 million balance. Yes, you are raising that and taking a little bit of risk, but there's an opportunity there. If you, if they do not spend it all, they get to keep them. If we spend it, that's another story. We spend. The other thing is deductibles. Right now, we are at 500 per single, a thousand per fan. And there are a lot of things that we can do with deductibles, and I think that would also save our plan, or excuse me. That would reduce our contribution that's necessary. So, two ways to reduce it.
I guess when I look at the fact that we've been the last three years, the stop loss has saved us money. I mean, you're, you're betting on the fact that people are going to be healthier going forward than they are right now to, in order to save money. And I, I just, I don't know that I see that happening.
Their, their people, their, Wellmark's people realize that, that's why you're seeing increasing stop loss.
But they're playing catch up, we're not. They're making up for last year's losses.
Well, it's gonna come to us eventually.
Yeah. They're not gonna go, there are, there are other. The other people that are subsidizing, cause through the county, you better tell, Wellmark, no, we're not gonna do this for tomorrow.
Well, that's, that's the point of it, to bounce, bounce out the hills and valleys.
I'm just saying. I know with the $35,000 stop loss, you will, you, the county will be paying that much more. If you raise it, you may, you may not.
But I mean.
It's estimated, it's what their actual, actuary seeks, has to make.
Yeah, that, oh yeah, it is a bit cheap. But if, if we had, if we had made the change to 60,000 last year, we would have saved less than 1%.
Correct, but Blue Cross, we knew they would have saved it.
Less than 1% of what they're suggesting for next year. So you're, you're looking at different years than that.
That's fine.
I don't mean to revisit anything, but anything I need to know coming back here.
A lot?
Complicated.
Okay.
It's complicated. We're looking in.
What are we looking at?
We are, we are discuss, discussing the stop loss comparison and whether we raise that level or not.
Oh, okay, okay.
If we don't raise that level, then we're looking at what, 27% raise or whatever for their charges for that. If we do raise it, we look at the risk on the other side.
Sure. I guess to me, maybe raising the out of pocket is less intrusive to the members, because the ones that don't get sick and don't use it aren't gonna see any difference, it's the ones that get sick.
The deductible?
No, the out of pocket.
That is the deductible.
That's the deductible.
Well. Deductible and out of pocket go hand in hand.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I would agree with that, because if you're paying the deductible, you're using the services.
Right, so the people that use the service are paying for the service more so.
Exactly, yeah, I would agree with that.
I'd like to see the numbers of the deductible increase. I feel like that's gonna make more of a difference than doing the stop loss.
Well, if you did both of them together, you'd probably guarantee yourself, or raise the future.
Maybe.
To the county, to the taxpayer, and that's.
But the problem is, is what she said was if we increase the stop loss, you can't go back.
You can't go back, ever.
So that's what, that's why I'm thinking, you know, we could look at the deductible, increasing the deduct, deductible and see where that gets us.
I would challenge that, one of the reasons you're seeing more people with more members over $35,000, because metal prices have increased.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
And we have kept that stop loss right there. If you, if you raise the stop loss, you're gonna have less members there. I, and it's, it is, it's a game. But I would challenge, I, when you make a statement that you'll never go back to 35,000, I don't know if the 35,000 dollars will be a realistic stop loss anyway, because it's just, I mean, start talking about having a child and it costs $40,000.
Well, she said it was never, it was not gonna be an option, so that's just.
That's what I'm saying, is if we change our stop loss to 60,000, we can't set it back in coming years. That, once it's there, it's there, you know, we can't make that adjustment for future years. That's what I was stating.
That's, that's what Karen said.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we were to increase it, I wouldn't go, you know, all the way up to the. So I'd stop it to 50 first. That's probably what I would, and see where it works out.
So if you, if you go to that page of the potential savings, if we were able to have these numbers for last year of what they quoted us and what it actually turned out to be, we would, I, I don't think we would have saved any money, because and that's where I was, I don't remember if it would have been on this form or the old forms. I don't, I might even have them in my file.
Well, you, the only way you're gonna save money is if you have people that stay underneath 50.
If, if people are healthier, and that's where our numbers were going the opposite direction from last year to this year.
But that just means in the future, they'll raise the premium higher.
I guess if that happens, we'll look somewhere else.
Oh. Insurance is not cheap. We have a really good insurance program here.
Yeah.
Uh, you, it is A1.
The other thing is that you go somewhere else and they might, that first year might be pretty cheap, the second year may.
A bigger increase, yeah.
There's big counties that make that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cherish your self-insurance and manage it wisely.
That'd be half what I'm looking for here.
If you want some time to do that, we could do something else while you're looking.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, Doug, you need to go get your stuff.
Yes.
We can, we can do whatever, but I'm, I'm gonna need time.
You wanna go get your stuff for the, for the road spraying and the bargaining and Black Hills Energy? While Kyle's looking for what he wants.
You don't have to.
Don't, don't leave the party.
Well, I do have something, we have Doug and I some trees.
How soon do you want? You see, I'm in the cars. You've got, you couldn't be.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to.
Yesterday.
We're gonna have to come back again for budgets, didn't you say? Cause you don't have, you don't have the stuff ready for today, right? Okay.
I don't want you coming in at the end and trying to do this.
I got a little bit of a difficult soul. When, you know, the first. Purchase you a lot. And we're in meeting at comedy session.
I don't think they gave us the same chart last time when we were discussing stop loss.
So by the end of next week, I think that'll be.
You need it Tuesday, we should have it so you can do something, correct?
Cause I have to start. The next Saturday first.
Yeah. Actually, we need a decision by Tuesday.
So we're gonna have budget scheduled for next Tuesday, after the meeting then, probably? Do you anticipate anything before that, or probably not?
We could, I think Chrissy is just waiting for a call back from solutions about possible issue, and then she's done, so.
Okay.
Means I can start putting my budget numbers, so. Yeah, it just depends on how quickly I can get the numbers that in the state system, I can get them balanced.
If, if you're down to, I don't know, what's everybody got? Could you do anything next Monday? Cause we don't get it all in the afternoon. Yeah.
That work better? Does that work better or worse for you guys?
Well, I think we could start in the morning on Monday, we'd be better off than trying to do it after a board meeting on some of this. What, what you guys got for Monday?
I'm not sick. Excuse me, my day working in, in the shop. I, I don't have an appointment till four o'clock. I, I could do something.
We deliver election equipment, I think, so it would have to be.
Doing, that's all right.
That would work better for me.
I just have an appointment at four o'clock.
Okay.
So if we do like one o'clock, it's meeting time for delivery just fixed, we say, so we get early and how we should be able to get that done by.
Why are you supposed to do that? So you get something done before Tuesday.
Are you gonna put that on your calendar?
Yeah, I'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
One o'clock.
Who am I going to?
I think Jack's gonna be going on vacation.
Again?
Yeah, 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 he is.
Yeah.
He, he leaves.
Okay.
He leaves Monday.
Yeah.
For the multi-house, so.
Yeah.
He's gonna miss out on all the fun.
He flies out of Tuesday.
Yeah. But we can't wait.
Yeah.
So Doug, we kinda figured out, we need to, we need something before next Tuesday. Or we have to have to figure it out next Tuesday, what we're gonna do with insurance. One way or another.
Perfect, purposes.
What we're gonna put in.
All right. Are there any workshops this week at all?
You wanna do something Thursday? What you got after the department head meeting? I think it's Thursday. Thursday?
Thursday's Friday.
The ladies did not want to.
Carter's gone Thursday.
Yeah.
That's okay though.
No, we want to be here.
I don't, I don't know.
When is that, 3:00 Thursday?
What do you got, Carter?
I mean, I, I work out of town every Thursday, so I, I don't know, it's. I won't be in the area.
But, but I think.
Friday, I will be out of town.
Yeah, I don't know that either of those will really work for me that well.
Well, that's a lot.
You've got to, you've got to come up with what, what your balance, that's always the question, what do you want for a balance in your self-insurance fund?
At the end.
And we, can't we talk that on Monday?
You got time Monday afternoon?
Cause, yeah, we talked about scheduling something Monday afternoon.
Sure, I think I'm here. No, I'm on, I'm gone, I'm out three weeks. Sorry, I meant names. I've got a bridge inspection search page and all week, don't crouch, I gotta be gone.
But in order to print our all the numbers, I have to have. So I can't finalize or print anything out for you guys, since I have.
What is preventing us from deciding today?
Nothing, I don't.
I don't.
Looking at it, I'm fine with, with 4% increase and raising it to 50.
Raising what, 50?
The stop off, the stop loss.
50, oh, I, I don't know about, I'm not comfortable raising the stop loss, and I I'll ask Karen for, K-Rin, I should say, for some of these other numbers from last year that I'm looking for, cause I'm not seeing what I'm looking for right now. We might not have gotten it in the same form, but.
Because if that's gonna be done next week, I need something.
Right.
This week.
So I just made a suggestion.
What would you like?
So the, the page, the, like the last page in this executive annual report, where they where they showed our stop loss comparison, it's got the different prices of what they would charge for those different levels, but if if you roll the clock backwards a year, I don't remember, and I haven't found the page yet, for what those prices would have been if we had taken that action last year, because the whole, the whole concept is based on betting on our employees' health to be better than what Wellmark is projecting, and what was the number here? Well, this network performance one, says we saved 51.8% in health claims with the current period, and this other one from last year had 30 some percent. I don't, I don't remember which page that was on, but we had, we had more high-cost claimants this year than last year. So if that trend continues to next year, we won't be making a positive difference in our ending fund balance.
Can, can you explain, I've never been, never had this kind of insurance or been an employee before or anything, what, can you explain to me how stop loss exactly affects the employee?
The stop loss doesn't, the stop loss does not affect the employee, the stop loss.
Okay, okay.
The stop loss is how, like, if you have a bill for 10,000, Josh has a bill for 50,000, we have stop loss at 35.
Yeah.
We pay all of your 10,000, we pay the first 35 of his, and Wellmark picks up the 15 after that. So anything above the stop loss insurance pays.
I see what you're saying, so if it's 50,000, the county pays up to $50,000, Wellmark covers it.
Yeah, so, so on that, on that last page of the executive report, it shows the red versus black numbers.
Yeah.
So it shows what we would have paid if the situ, if the change had happened last year. So if, if this list doubles of the claims over 35, or say over 35 to 50, and we make the change to pay for 50, we're responsible for everything, 50 and down. So if, if that list gets longer or more dollars in it, we'll be going backwards, would be my point.
But by raising our stop loss, that significantly affects our premium.
The, the stop loss.
Position of significant.
Well, I, I should say percentage wise.
It does reduce.
That's right.
The higher stop loss.
That's why, that's why.
Plus one.
Yeah, yeah. It's not too great, I love.
Yeah. But that's because we're paying. But that's because we're paying more of it out of our pocket versus out of their pocket.
Correct, correct.
I guess I can, I can see we're gonna need to.
Sure, come on back. Yep. Yep.
I can see we're probably gonna need to um, increase our. Our contribution. To the, to the self insurance fund in general, um, if we make some of that up by employee costs or whatever, that's what. That's a separate conversation, but I, I can see we're gonna need to increase the costs for health insurance. But I would not be comfortable changing the stop loss right now. Thought we had talked about planning five percent before for.
I'm, I'm comfortable with five percent, so that brings in an extra million dollars.
Yeah, and I'll, I mean. I'll try and look at this more tonight, you know, through the week, but um.
Well, we're gonna have to make up our mind today and get it done. Cause there's no, there's no concrete here that it's, we're going on expectations.
Right.
Yeah.
You can look all you want, it's not gonna change next year what happens.
But we've historically been building a fund balance um.
But you have to because it gets more expensive.
It does, I.
Well.
But that was, that was one of the questions I had asked previously is where, where do we? Where do we need to be at or where should we be at and?
Well, it goes back to how, how much exposure you have and how, how high price medical.
So.
How high price is medical going to get?
Yeah, so if we raise our exposure, then we jeopardize our fund balance by not having enough to potentially.
Correct.
If, if Walmart, if we have it in a fixed fee in the stop loss cost. It's more. More predictable.
You guys be comfortable with the forty five percent? Forty five thousand stop loss?
I, I, I don't think so.
I do. It just makes more sense in the end, you have the, you have the possibility of saving more money in.
So you, you would save.
If you don't have people get.
You would save a hundred and. Not quite a hundred and thirty thousand. But if you go down to the bottom um.
You have the risk of spending a hundred and fifty one thousand.
Yeah.
Well, it's just depending on.
Did you plan?
Go like the other future again.
Yeah, so you.
Be a lot less, could be a lot more out of.
So in that scenario, you would be going backwards.
Correct, if we repeated this year next year.
Or if it gets worse, you go either.
Well, he's saying if we went up to forty five thousand. On our um. On this premium difference, it'd be about thirty one thousand, is that right?
A hundred.
Hundred, sorry, a hundred and thirty one thousand?
A hundred, hundred twenty eight.
Hundred and twenty eight thousand. What are you getting a hundred and twenty eight?
Cause you'd have, the increase from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three is two ninety one, six twenty eight. So if you went to forty five thousand, you'd have one sixty three, seven thirteen, so the difference. One twenty eight and change. So then if you go down to that line for forty five thousand, the additional claim dollars. You'd save a hundred and thirty thousand and you'd spend a hundred and fifty one if you repeat last year. If you have more people that get to um, over thirty five, you would make it even worse. So you'd be going. You'd be going the wrong direction in the, to the tune of twenty thousand. If, if you take half of those individuals off the list, you'd, you'd make money, but.
The bottom chart is using. Last year's, yes, last year's patients. The additional claims paid is using what Walmart actuary is estimate for consumer count.
No, it's using last year's, last year's individuals with the change in stop loss.
The top. Top additional claims paid. But the actuary thing, she said.
Are you looking at the top chart or the bottom?
The top, and that's what the actuary thinks it's gonna cost.
But I'm.
Two separate things there.
Yeah, but what I was saying is you use the numbers from the top and then the numbers on the bottom for the additional claim dollars.
You're using two, two separate, you're using two separate things.
How so?
Because the bottom is estimating using the people last year or current year. Over thirty five thousand, but the additional claims paid in the top is what the actuaries said. That's what the calculators down at Walmart said, they, they expect.
I, I'm taking the difference from the top chart with the numbers presented in the bottom chart. To find, to look at how that would actually play out in a real world scenario.
And, cause you're estimating, you're, you're using, you're using last year's data and projected.
Because the.
Projection for the next year. You're, you're completely.
This is what they're, this is what they're estimating the annual charges to be, this is what. If we had done the forty five thousand, this is what we would have paid.
That's, that's my point.
But this is estimated for next. Yeah, if we go to that.
No, the top includes that what they would charge us. And it, it has the additional claims paid there.
And it's different than what you, the bottom chart is because they're calculating it two different ways. And if you wanna talk to them, people that are using actuary science or whatever mathematics or. Whatever statistics those are, that's what is going on with that additional claims.
But even at that, even on the top chart for the forty five thousand level. It's got a two ten, not even two tenths of a percent impact.
Yeah, we're not gonna pay more.
That's.
For that estimate, we're gonna be paying less. Ninety nine point eight percent, if one, if we go thirty five thousand. And it could be smaller.
Or it could be larger.
No.
Yes.
It's gonna be.
Doug, are you, are you promoting disleaving at thirty five percent?
No. No, I, I think we should, we need to go up.
Go up?
Just because. You, you're always going to have more members a- as prices for. Any kind of medical procedure continue to rise, so I, I haven't heard where anything down, I don't. Has the hospital come in and said they're gonna start reducing their rates?
No, they just get nurses and crazy again.
You know, and.
It was pretty obvious to me when you looked at the statistics, most of the claims are age fifty five and older. We're all getting older, most of us are. So, yeah.
Well, you gotta get rid of too old. True, I haven't even been to the doctor yet this year.
So I don't think.
Well, that's gonna double her, her claims.
Yeah, so if. So it, so if we have more people getting to that thirty five thousand plus. If we raise it, we're paying more of those bills.
Yeah. It, it's a wa- it's a wash. And I'll tell you what's the right thing to do, we just don't know.
Uh, if we, if we go away from it, we ain't going, we can't go back.
Well, I think we need to, there's, if, if you want to reduce. There's a couple of different things to reduce our contributions. And I believe that one of them. Would be to increase that stop loss, the other one is to go with higher deductibles and out of pocket maximums. Or combination of both.
We could reduce our contribution from the county by having employees pay part of it too.
I, I think that's a really good idea, but I do think that probably raising. The out of pocket is probably more acceptable to employees.
Deductible, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, that's my opinion, but.
I, I agree with that too, but I, I'd rather do that than the stop loss, I think the stop.
I'd rather.
Impact our program.
I don't want the fund balance to get down below. Three million. Just give it a number. But then, then we don't have enough money for expected claims.
But then the higher you raise the stop loss, the more exposure we have in house.
In house, correct, but then we're not paying as much premium to Blue Cross Blue Shield, which does us no good either.
You gotta be able to offset it though.
That's, that's why we have self insurance comp, is, is to take a little bit of the risk.
Yeah, but we're doing thirty five thousand worth of it for every person.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm not, you wanna say I'm right, I'm saying that it's, it's. Game, how are you gonna play it?
Right.
But I seriously don't wanna go below three million dollars on the fund balance of your.
Well.
Well, I'm not, but. Then they're really gonna, then they're really gonna raise our premium.
Yeah.
Because they know that we're not funded fully.
Having the balance there gives that. Insurance factor to the insurance fund, so I agree with that, but.
I have no problem going to five percent increase or, or going with a higher deductible or a higher out of pocket.
Yeah, I'd be good with that, I'd just be very concerned about stop loss changes. That's, that's my opinion.
Doug, are you comfortable with us making a decision today?
Oh, yeah, I think so. What I have for. Auditors balance at the end of. Yeah, the end of January.
Yeah.
Three plus three million seven thousand six hundred four dollars, is that?
Correct, that's what I have.
So what you have in your balance sheets?
It, it doesn't show that, but it's predicting the beginning of that balance for twenty three twenty four.
Oh.
Two point seven seven five now.
What's that now? What's using what, where are you getting that number from?
That's the. Fund the balance, oh, that's because, never mind, that's because I put in last year's number, so that's why I showed you.
Cause I, I got an estimated ending balance of two million eight hundred one thousand. Two million eight hundred two thousand, is what I'm kind of estimating us ending with this year.
This year. Yeah, cause you got a hundred thousand off of it for five months.
Well, it's just kind of. You, I, you know, we have, we know what our revenue was going to be and looking at some of the expenses, but um. We've went through seven months and we've lost a hundred thousand, so I think if you take. A hundred thousand divided by seven twelfths and subtract that from your. From your um, balance, that's where that two point eight million.
So what was, one thing I was like that was the uh, you know, what we're. What our percentage. So usage is.
Yeah, right now. I mean, we, we expect. One million. Eight hundred seventy one thousand uh. Dollars. And the maximum that we'd have to pay is that two million three hundred thirty eight thousand and. Our expenditures right now are at, this is total expenditures, some of this is wellness. Except one million four hundred forty five thousand, so we still got. Four hundred thousand plus four hundred twenty five thousand uh, in the next. Five months before we reach that. What they expect for their, what they expected last year with their stuff.
Well, we don't wanna get there either.
It, yeah, I, but some, you know, if you go up through the history um. We have. Had, if you just look at the change in the auditor's balance in the history over. You can, the ones in red in parentheses, those are the times that we've lost money. And two years ago, we ended up with a pretty good amount with four hundred sixty nine thousand. Ended up keeping in our balance.
Last year.
Yeah, there's, there's.
But we did have an increase in premium there.
Right.
There's five years in that that have four hundred thousand dollar increases.
Well, I think if you look at that. Going back to nine and ten and you go to ten eleven, we reduced the contribution fifteen percent. So, yes, we saw that we, we were covering things. And the board took appropriate action by reducing that hundred fifteen percent.
Probably wasn't the right thing to do in the end, though, we should have left the title.
I, I would agree with that.
So no, I, I think that that was so, that was a good move. We can't keep growing things out.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have balance, you can't have an exponential fund balance sitting there.
So that's why those first four were so high.
Work. See, even, even the estimated maximum liability is a right in the middle, two point three million. So I mean, if we're three million plus, we're. We're substantially above our max liability. I, I'd be. Comfortable there for sure.
I'm just looking at this, we raised our out of pocket to nine hundred for single and two thousand for family, that's about one month premium. If you go over here.
If you made that the employees out of pocket?
Yeah. Yeah, eight, uh, nine hundred and two thousand, I'm just.
Yeah, cause the.
We can, we can justify it.
There's a, there's a lot of.
Where's our?
Dollars, they pay, they pay five hundred dollars a month and they stand there and they still. They still have a five thousand dollar deductible, it's low on top for it.
Correct.
Yeah. Cause are we at five hundred and a thousand right now for deductible?
Correct.
Yeah, I could easily see them doubling.
What are you thinking, a thousand, two thousand?
Yeah.
No, well, yeah, about.
Nine hundred, I just said go by the premium, which is eight fifty nine forty four and twenty one forty eight, make it nine hundred and two thousand.
Nine hundred, well, you got almost twenty three hundred, so if you wanna follow that, you could do.
Right now.
Ten percent.
Yeah.
Ten percent, fly that. If you're aiming.
Just getting your numbers to think about.
Yeah.
However, we get there, I don't care.
Our contribution right now is for single is seven hundred thirty five, the family is one thousand eight hundred ten.
Right. But I was going by estimated suggested contributions the last year.
I don't believe that we need to go to the suggestion by any.
Okay.
Yeah, which.
We, but even if you go to the other one.
If you did, if you did ten percent of our contribution, you'd be at seven.
One thousand seven hundred and sixty.
Well, that, that's per month, so.
I mean, you did. You did, be a. Sixteen hundred.
Seven thirty five times twelve is eighty eight twenty, so you'd have. Eight hundred eighty two. For ten percent.
For the single.
For single.
Yeah, yeah.
Eighteen.
Well, that's gonna help too. She's, she has, she's saying at the top, user, it's gonna go on Medicare. That was a lot of.
That was a lot of hat-trick doing to me.
Dang it, but.
Oh, she said, oh, it's gonna, it's gonna happen.
They'll, they will, they will be primary, but they won't cover everything, so that Medicare would be the first to pay, but we will still have bills.
That's difficult.
That's, they estimated five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand to a million.
It's gonna help a lot right there.
So, the family would be at twenty-two hundred. So, eight hundred and twenty-two hundred would be about ten percent for each.
There's no reason to go that high.
For deductible.
That's gonna put a burden on employees.
If you're gonna change deductible, I, I would think it would be fair to do that at a time when employees are, know that they are going to. Have more expenses out-of-pocket and when they, is that called in the fall when we, we enroll in our.
We have one enrollment that our deductible starts to change.
But it'll at least allow people to adjust for that, so they can have some.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say communicating that to employees, it's gonna be.
They, they, some would change their app like, uh, money probably, huh?
No, it's the amount of money that you put into your.
Health savings, when you do.
Not like health savings.
That helps in your flaps.
Yeah, right, right, I meant, I meant flaps, yeah, right, right, right. You understand?
Yeah, I did, yeah, yes, anywhere, yeah, cause that, and that's when our deductibles start.
Well.
But.
They split it.
Yeah, you're gonna, as soon as your deductible is gonna start, I mean, you can pay.
But that would get people who are using it to pay more, like you were saying, Roger.
And it costs.
Well, everybody's gonna fail, huh?
Not if you don't use it. Cause your deductible, your out-of-pocket deductible is only when you actually use the, use your facilities.
I mean, just because we don't have big points, that means we're not gonna have anything.
True, but like.
I know, I know when. And I know the low out-of-pocket deductible is very, it's an incentive for employees that is, I mean, I know even when we were. Looking to hire for the city, I think. That, that was one of the biggest things was how can I get a better deductible? Even if we had good insurance, he, he wanted that. So. I, I don't know if that would affect. Employees to a point where it would be, I know there's gonna be this problem on it, but just.
You have families that have little kids that have their, you know, six months, one year appointments, and their physicals are all bad.
Which is why they like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I'm hesitating.
Still have to be.
I know, I know.
Buyable insurance company.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I can see we're gonna have to raise the. Contribution in some way, shape, or form, just because of the. The numbers we have in front of us, I just. Depending on where we pull it from, but I don't, I don't think stop losses are saving grace here.
No. Yeah, that is.
You gotta interview it free, Doug.
Yeah, next to there.
Yeah, okay.
How many dollars, Doug, do you think we need to generate to make it solvent?
Well, I, I think that right now, again, for a single person contribution, seven thirty-five is what it is. And. I think if you went up to seven seventy-five. Seven hundred seventy, somewhere in there, that's, um, five percent, four percent will work.
Yeah, I'd.
Seven sixty-four, seven sixty-five. And for a family, we got one thousand eight hundred ten, that would increase it, uh, four percent is up to one thousand eight hundred eighty-two. Five percent. Nineteen hundred. So, I think you just gotta decide somewhere in that seven seven, seven six zero to seven seven zero to. Eighteen eighty to two, to eighteen hundred, to nineteen hundred.
Was four percent on the bottom of that, or was that the top end? I didn't remember what you said for your numbers there.
That's four to five.
Okay.
I think we go four percent.
Yeah, I'm.
I think, especially with that, looking at that one eight hundred.
You can still, at that, I think you can still look at some of the other options, but that would give you budget dollars.
Yeah, I would, I would be comfortable with that. It's reasonable.
Raise deductible up to seven fifty and. Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty or fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I don't know what they, I think that's kind of what includes five hundred, are they?
Yeah, so you'd probably go to five hundred, five hundred and. Or we're at five hundred and a thousand, so you'd add five hundred and a thousand to get to a thousand and two thousand.
Or would you do thousand fifteen hundred? Do you have to do a five hundred dollar increase?
Your family, if your family said that they're gonna be more than just two people, have children, kids, and that, so you should have.
But I, for some reason, that's in the back of my mind, I don't, I don't.
I don't know.
It'd be, it'd be.
Any conversations with them on deductible?
It'd be tough to raise the single five hundred and then the family five hundred, cause that would really equal out.
It would not be proportional.
Right.
It is current.
Correct.
Single.
And then a thousand for family.
So, so family is double of what they.
Fifty and five, and fifty, five hundred would be.
If you, if you can do that off of five hundred.
Single and fifteen for family.
Would you say, Jack, seven fifty?
Seven fifty and fifteen.
Fifteen hundred.
I'm fine with.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, or thousand and two thousand.
Go up four percent and raise the deductible, seven fifty and fifteen hundred, and I don't think that's a burden to anybody. People are gonna have to know that something's gotta give, and there's gotta be some increases somewhere, so.
Yeah.
Somebody wanna make that a motion so that Doug can get to his exit interview?
I would.
Kyle?
That we can't make a move.
Oh, now he's in there.
Oh, you only have discussion.
That's a budgeted figure.
Yeah, so I don't make.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we just all agree on the, so if we can agree on that, yeah, 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 we agree. Four percent, and then the deductible to seven fifty.
That, that's not a budget, that doesn't matter.
You don't need to know that, okay. Okay.
So, you'll check into that to see if that's even feasible.
We'll see if it's.
I don't have to, but, put it into, I mean, you're gonna wanna put. Some sort of a dollar. I mean, you're gonna go four, are you gonna go four percent strict, or are you gonna say seven hundred sixty-five dollars?
I'd round it to the nearest dollar.
Forty percent to seven hundred sixty-four dollars and forty cents.
Thirty-seven, seven sixty-five. Seven sixty-five.
Okay.
Or seven seventy-five, which do you?
Sixty-five.
Family is eighteen eighty-two, eight, one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cents, and.
I'd say eighteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
Just halfway around, no more.
Okay, so long as we get something done here, so we can do the budget.
So, I will give. I give permission to.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
And then you have other things on the agenda, Doug, that we have to do.
I do, yes. Tell them while we're down there and, are you pleased? I think that's, that's fine. Okay.
First thing I got is the union.
Contract, yeah.
Yes, this is when you're holder, the man ratified. That, uh, union agreement, so there's a motion to accept and approve the labor agreement negotiated January twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. Between Cassuit County and the International Union of Operating Engineers for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-six.
Everybody know what the labor agreement was?
It was eight, eight, four, and four, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, eight, four, yeah.
That is correct.
Everybody comfortable with that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the secondary road labor agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Whacter, seconded by.
Second.
Any discussion on the subject? Hearing none. Do, we'll all vote quick.
Black?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Jerk?
Yeah.
Sign that, Roger, I'll get to the. Okay, um. Nate, I can bring up his car's name, was written this morning. I was gonna introduce him, uh, to you. Uh, Nate Reefer, he will be Don Reefer's son. Don, uh, suddenly passed away. And, uh, Nate and Troy Fox are kind of. Both owners of that. Troy was in over last year, but we have a wheat sprain. Uh, roadside sprained, a program where every third of the, every third of the county, we divide the county into thirds, A forty-two in north. Uh, A forty-two to Highway eighteen, and then Highway eighteen is south. Every third year, they get treated. Uh, with either a patron, which is a chemical, and that's a broadcast treatment. Or milestone, which is for thistles only, broad, uh, so what they do, for example, in your map, uh, twenty twenty-three. The roadside spraying, the middle third of the county will be broadcast treatment with patron. The north third of the county, um, will get the thistle treatment. Last year, patron was in the southern third, milestone was in the middle third, so it just rotates around. Um. Their prices, they have seen increases, uh, with their chemical costs. And their patron has, uh, they have quoted fifty dollars and fifty cents a gallon, they, uh, expect to use nine hundred thirty-seven gallon. Uh, last year, they actually had forty-two dollars and seventy cents, so it's about thirty-one, uh, percent increase. Their milestone, uh, they have quoted milestone, Nate says they have what is called a wheat stone. And the milestone cost, uh, is pro, is, uh, proposed at three, three hundred forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Last year, it was three hundred twenty-two dollars, that's about a six percent increase. Um, Nate's thinking that if we use wheat stone, and I don't, I told him I would discuss this with him. The cost would be more of what it was last year. I wanna be insured that it does as good a job as I, I wanna talk.
Is it a generic equivalent?
It's a generic equivalent of milestone, so he's got to give me some more information. Their rates for spraying, they have five hundred seventy-two miles at forty-eight dollars a mile, that's what they charged us last year. And, uh, in the, uh, third of the county from Highway eighteen, that's. He's got another type of one that I just read. He's actually the, um. Milestone's going north, the wheat stone, um. We had his five hundred sixty-four miles, which is correct, you just got a description of it. Uh, he's using forty-eight, and that's what they charged last. So I would recommend that we, uh. Use B and W again this year for the spraying. I recommend that approval, I recommend the board approval of that.
Motion by Black?
Second.
Second by Carter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried unanimous.
And then. Construction of the road right away, we have one request of the construction, that's from, um.
Black.
Black Hills Energy. They are replacing some gas line, and it's specifically by Jim Black's, um, residents. There, my understanding is there is a, yeah. Gas line underneath there, and some new rules, they are required to replace those of road right away. So anyway, they're requesting work in the road right away. I'd recommend the board would approve of this request, so.
Motion by Black, second by.
Second.
Second by Carter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried unanimous.
Doesn't look like that's very far from his house, with that little pipeline conversation being right there. That's something we beat, maybe.
And then for discussion, um, the exit interview tonight, today is, we had a mechanic that resigned. Andrew Whitaker, so we're gonna have an exit interview with him, so we're looking for two mechanics at the mechanic shop. That, uh, increases the workload quite a bit for the two that are there right now, Mark and Nick. Trying to work. Uh, road condition yesterday with the rain, we had a, um. Handful of gravel or surface roads that water actually went over, and we're working on them this morning. We had gravel roads that people tore to heck. All the grain, all the fogs, all the feed, any other loads, um, in fact, I was on this phone call before I came up here at one o'clock. Uh, and he's. Very unsatisfied with our discussion.
Well, so, I had a call yesterday, Dick Lipton, I said over at where Missman lives, or like where Ryan lives, is the, the roads washed out real bad. The gravel roads.
We, we've been on him, Jack, I don't know, I'll make a note of it, so.
Just in case you haven't seen it yet, he, he said that it's, uh, it's kinda dangerous over there.
Yeah, I've, I've got a lot of phone calls, um.
Well, you would please just have him call the engineer's office, so we can get those to the foreman right away, I'd appreciate it.
Got anything?
Are we able to put out any larger rock, like one inch, instead of gravel at this time of year?
Well. You, we may be doing more damage than good if we go out there with agri, get unloaded, unloaded trucks. We try, we haul, we were hauling agri today, um. We could, the suggestion by the gentleman today, he, uh, he said we should get rid of ground. Two hundred, two dollars and fifty cents a ton versus fifteen dollars a ton, um, I don't, he, he thought we should just do it. He's telling me how much taxes he pays, uh, it costs money. We, we've been through it. We've had almost three inches of rain this year, twenty twenty-three. I don't, I, I didn't, I didn't look back at the years I've been keeping up with it. We've had that much snow, we haven't had that much rain. This is an extremely weird year, um, even two thousand nineteen.
Is, is the fifteen bucks a ton for one-inch road stone?
That's mine, just, just using round figures, then we.
What size?
Well, three-quarter inch, we're up, rough stone.
Three-quarter inch.
Rough stone, um, but if you don't wanna just put out, you gotta have binder in.
Yeah, yeah.
Think you gotta just put out the coarse agri.
Yeah.
You gotta have binder in. And you gotta launder haul. We got our stockpile here in Cassuit County, we're gonna be running to garden, fertile. We got our stockpile here in Sioux County. We're gonna be running to Gardner, Fertile, Humble, O'Hawness, or excuse me, Gilmore City.
Yeah.
We aren't gonna give as much product down. So I don't think that's the answer. We are putting so long that we have stock. Um so.
One thing I was gonna ask you on uh P thirty, I had been meaning to bring this up. I think it was after the last ice storm. Looked like there's chunks that were peeled out of the road from the blade. I didn't know if you've seen the condition of that rate.
Thirty brown.
Southwest City.
Sioux City to A forty two?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't look bad all the way, but I would say all the way until the last mile, maybe two miles from that intersection. It.
North intersection or south intersection?
The Bancroft-Seneca Road. Um when you get, the closer you get to that intersection, the better the road looks. So I just.
When you get up there, I would look at.
I've noticed some on roads, the whole state highways too, where it's denigrated this year.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
Chunks missing.
There's chunks out of, uh you can, it, I'd say it looks like it, it was coming right from the blade, but out of the center line, high spots in the road, there's, there's visible chunks out of it. And I'm sure that won't be nice with moisture now and freezing and thawing and.
Doug, you need to get to your exit interview, I guess. Anything else, or?
Well. Um I need to amend my budget, and then I also wondered what your guys' thoughts are. When I left, last I, last we heard is you wanted me to reduce my revenue and my expenditures. And I wonder if that's still the case. I'd ask you, and I'd give you a letter, and uh cause your next year will be, there will be a lot of choices that will have to be made if revenue is not, is reduced by that much. Um and it sounds like Amy needs to have that information, so. I am gone next week in a bridge training. Doug Crouch is on a, is gone next week on a bridge training. So I would like to know. I mean, if you guys wanna hold that, but I, I do want you to know that by reducing expenditures according to those revenues, and next year, you take that, you take money out of the, out of the balance, the only thing that you have is you're, you're gonna reduce services. You're gonna increase revenue, which was property taxes. All the rest of it's pretty much staying the same or combination of both. I want it clear. That's what will need to be going on.
I have the budget the way it was presented, I mean.
Well, it's been reduced.
Yeah, well, I think you took it down.
By, by the board supervisors, I took it from the board supervisors.
I was not here.
I mean, we just, we just talked. I don't know how many miles the road got destroyed. Uh you know?
And you lost.
It's, it's, it's humorous almost. People call me up. One guy called me up yesterday. I was in a, I was in planning zoning last night. He was pissed off because I didn't call him back. Okay, I called him back. He was just chewing my rear end. And his uh, his solution is to go to all limestone. I just heard it here. Can we put out limestone? If you guys wanna tough it all, you've, you're gonna have to tell people to stop asking for services. When the, when things get muddy, we may not be able to go out fix. When the snow budget is done, what are you gonna do? Do you want to be able to possibly go out and move snow, or do you want, we'll just work our eight hours and that's it? This morning, I think the road department all of a sudden got thrown a two hundred thousand dollar bill for a drainage assessment if it gets let. That's not in the budget. Okay, you guys tell me what you want, but I'm not gonna be the fall gun. Last night, we had a planning and zoning meeting. Or the public hearing. Um there was some problems with recording. I've had a lot of people already ask for information. I'm asking them to do it all per chapter twenty two, which is request for information. I'm not gonna have people accusing me of not providing the information. They're gonna have to write a letter and ask me is specifically what it is, and I will provide it. And if there are necessary costs, I will be having to force them to do that. And then tomorrow night, we have a commu- uh Sioux Waste Management Association annual meeting, so.
Oh, yeah, and I want to get up there, we're gonna be in Des Moines. Roger, commute.
Tomorrow night, here?
Yes.
What time?
Seven o'clock. Seven o'clock.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Doug.
So I'm hearing that.
I said, as a budget, I was fine with the budget the way it was. You took it down a couple million dollars for previous year, from what I see.
Seven hundred thousand dollars. Right, yes, I did. They always reduce.
Was most of that on, on rural basic, Doug?
Yes.
What did, I don't.
Yeah, the six hundred thousand was rural.
Our rural basic dollars are significantly lower than what they were asked for last year.
Right.
Even with the increase of valuation. And the dollars was significantly lower.
I get more calls on poor roads than what I do on high taxes. So my opinion is to go back to the original budget, but that's my suggestion.
Would have that, finally, the way it was originally due, I didn't have a problem.
Think we're gonna also have to take into account that we did just lose another mechanic, and that will increase costs there too.
Yes. And you're not gonna hire anybody unless you pay them.
Correct.
So I'm fine with going to your original budget.
I'm fine with that.
You want me to put those numbers in, and then we can look at it on Monday?
Well, our Carter, you find with going to the original budget?
I don't know that I would. I mean, I, I, I guess I still had questions and concerns with the original budget, but I understand, I don't think we can reduce it quite if it was left. Can we look at that Monday, or?
Um I can.
Doug isn't here.
Oh, you're not here. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right.
And he's got an exit interview we could kind of, give him some guidance.
Yeah.
So how, how much do you reduce it by? Seven hundred thousand?
Six, six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
And that was all in the rural basic?
Rural basic, yeah, yeah.
Even though windmills now are going, are being taxed.
Right.
There. You're uh, so you have an opportunity, you, you have an opportunity to get revenue from industry moving into Sioux County, and you choose not to take.
Mr. Whacker, are you fine? Which way do you wanna go?
I guess I'd be fine with the original.
You would be?
I think considering all that, we may have to go with that.
Yeah, we gotta even set this.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, we'll go with the regional budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Doug. Everything, it'll have to be what it, what it'll be this year, I think.
Who else? Are we finally to Sioux County?
Good morning or good afternoon?
Yeah. Very far.
The Fair Board brought in this um twenty twenty two Free Gate fundraisers. Um it's money that they collected um for Free Gates. I don't know if somebody asked for that. He said that they were supposed to bring it to me. I'm guessing somebody asked for that, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we wanna, we wanna see that, because they're supposed to do matching funds.
Okay, okay, so um I'll put it in their file, then.
Yeah.
I can email it to you, too.
No, but you just need to file that, because we give them five thousand here, correct?
Five thousand, yeah.
Free gate, so that has to, oh, point this with that somehow.
Sure.
Also.
Yeah.
So they were supposed to try to
Okay.
generate some money to.
Um so we were supposed to have election worker training last Thursday, but because of the weather last week, my ladies from Sioux City and Bancroft did not wanna drive, so we postponed that till tomorrow. So we're doing election worker training tomorrow. On Monday, we will be delivering equipment. And Tuesdays, the election, and Wednesday, we'll be picking up the equipment. Um we haven't had a lot of voters, but we didn't expect we would. We have seven precincts, six locations. And we're not expecting any problems. It'll probably be a, a low turnout. Uh everything seems to be going pretty well so far, so no expected problems. Um we're still watching the new Senate files that would reduce growth. It will not be proactive for this year, so I'm not keeping as close of an eye on it as I was, because it will won't affect fiscal year twenty four, so I'm not too concerned about that right now. I'm just worried about getting our budget back up to date. Uh Christie's worked really hard at trying to get valuations done. We have TIP done. I'll start putting in the numbers for the budget dates of stuff, so uh I think once we get that done, everything else will fall into place, so. If we could meet Monday at one o'clock, that will help with those, going through those numbers and see where we're at. And if those, what the levy rates would be, and if you're okay with whether we need to adjust anything.
Well, that was, that was kind of my hesitation in any, any direction for the engineer's budget, because until we know levy rates, you don't have solid information, but.
Well, we're way under on the rural basic. We're way under.
I don't think we increased priority, anything, so I think it was zero last year.
Didn't we do two percent?
That was for two.
Oh, you're two percent, possible.
I think so, that was zero.
We did. I, I thought we did.
Anyway, you, we can come and look at, we can look at it.
Yeah, can look after the meeting, that's why.
Uh. That's about, I think, I can't think of anything else.
Okay. Big agenda items next week?
Next week, it, I'm looking for a small agenda next week, because it's election day, and it'll be a lot going on. So right now, we have um appoint planning and zoning commissioner, approval of resolution to dissolve the twenty eighty agreement with workforce development, and uh dental renewal plans, or dental renewal rates and plan.
Not much.
No, and I'm hoping to keep it that way.
Good.
So Carter, for you on the twenty eighty agreement, that was discussed when you were gone, so you could either watch the video, or I could explain that to you outside, since it was already discussed here.
I did watch part of the video.
But that's.
I don't.
We, we about. Okay, so we, yeah, we already discussed that, but to follow the protocol required, we have to have it in resolution form.
Sure.
So there was already a motion vote unanimous to dissolve it, but we have to put, we have to sign an actual resolution, so.
Have you talked to Todd to see if he's?
No, I need to double check with him to see if he's looked through it yet, but I have that on my radar.
Jack, I mean, we had, we had a board meeting yesterday, early childhood of Bancroft, uh there's a uh thing called Ice Mile. There's some, some of the uh early childhood service, service and work entities do use it. We're, we, we're not using it currently, so we're looking at whether or not we wanna fund that or not. Went through our board self-evaluation, and we got our desert redesignation this year for early childhood. Um there's, this year, twenty two literacy grants, uh even school ready. Um just in that, two years ago, there was only four, so we've been pushed forward to twenty two. There's thirty eight different boards, UCI boards in the state of Iowa. There's a list of all of them, and, and some things that they fund. Uh Selena gave assists, so we had that, and look at uh some things that other uh boards are doing, and what they're uh st- uh giving uh funding towards. And looking at that, and then this is our community plan. This will be part of our redesignation that, that has to be gone over this year, I think, in like uh August or something like that, or October for the redesignation, so we'll be working on that. So there's some good, I mean, a lot of good information there. Somebody wants to look at it. It was talks about population, uh census, uh ethnicity, children, poverty, unemployment rates, childcare need, and there's a lot of that, that information there. Somebody who's interested, looking at that. Read it your own pleasure.
Carter, did you have anything last week?
Uh yeah, I had the wellness last Wednesday, my first wellness meeting. I decided not to apply for the weight loss program. They, um they have about sixteen hundred dollars in their account um for employee balance, so they're they gave three hundred and twenty-ish dollars to each of the schools here in Algonah. Um to both high schools for wellness programs at the schools. Otherwise, that's about it, and that. Uh had, just, just had Care Connections meeting a little bit ago. Um they, we barely had a quorum, so uh we just did the basic business, and they pushed things off until we had more members there next month. Uh but we do have, looking at two point eight million dollars to take in next year for, from grant money uh from the state. And currently, we're at thirty percent of using, we're at thirty percent of our current budget right now January. Um and the budgets, we, we don't use, wouldn't have to use two point eight million dollars, but it's that big, because we spend it down, that way the state gives us money to operate again. Um so, but other than that, uh they have expanded treatments for for help for, to cover brain injuries, as well as developmental disorders. Uh autism is included in some of that, um for what they're adding help for for families, so. Otherwise, still working on the building in Spencer and getting that underway.
Josh?
Um didn't really have anything other than the planning and zoning last night. Um but a pretty good turnout for that, and a lot of good information, and it's great to hear from our attorney, Tim Whipple, and like what was said earlier, he gave a pretty good, high-level overview of of the amendment to our ordinance and, and what that all entails, and um spent a lot of good discussion with everybody, pretty was, pretty respectful, so it was good to see. Um it's well overdue meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Um this week, uh reminder tomorrow is the EMA um tabletop exercise at the Training Center. Um and then Friday, I'll be in Sioux City for the Third Judicial Board of um Corrections.
Third Judicial District?
Yeah. That owns a mountain, I always. So for me, that's it?
Yeah.
Tom?
Um I had a meeting yesterday for um it was, some things were highlighted that were discussed out in DC, but few things I was going to highlight is there are over four hundred federal programs, thirteen departments, ten independent agencies, over fifty offices and sub-agencies. And it is a nightmare to try and work through all those programs and follow who does what. Um and in response to the, or one, one small piece in regards to the cost of NACO and the trip out there, we recently received or Tammy signed up and did the paperwork, but it was correspondence from NACO um and our s- uh federal representatives. I had a call from Colby Duit. The Senator Ernst about a hundred thousand dollars in LAT. The Senator Ernst about a hundred thousand dollars in LATCF funds. So that's a hundred thousand dollars that the county can use for pretty much anything we're already doing that is just, it was available, but we wouldn't have gotten it if we didn't, didn't understand what it was there for. So that's a direct benefit. Think that's, well, and other stuff has already been discussed with planning and zoning, all that. So.
Okay. I met with Summit last night and had a good conversation with him.
Individually?
Yeah.
I guess I did last week.
Yeah.
You know, you met with him last week. They're trying to get ahold of Jack. They're trying to get ahold of everybody.
The afternoon, I met with them.
I.
I thought I gave up and answered phone.
I talked to him yesterday too.
So.
I just sat down, got over it. I, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I've talked to her a couple of times and I just haven't had. It was a fine time. Yeah. They gave me some information. I thought it was good.
That's all that we got. Anything else to come for the good of Cassius County?
I will go on next week.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'll do it. I got it.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carried, we're adjourned.
I'm. Okay. You want it back?
No.
Okay, I, I mean, I mean, it's interesting. There's, there's a lot of interesting information.
Yeah.
So smile, is that an acronym? Ice Smile?
Ice Smile.
It's a, it's a down hologram.
I tried to.
It didn't have any order.
Right. Yeah.
I, I've heard of it, but I never, you get, if they get, like, they go into schools and a lot of it's for like doing coating material, no order.
Fluoride treatment.
Not fluoride, but it was where they actually put out treatment, so then the polishing, not polishing either itself. So some kind of coating to put out.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about it.
And then it's supposed to get, get reduced.
Carter's gonna hear the Ice Miles through North Iowa Community Action.
Okay.
And you get ahold of North Iowa Community Action, you might be able to pick up some revenue from one for Ice. Okay.
And stores.
They do administer.
Well, people in the forest soon.
Yeah.
Do the hot dog or the hamburger bun, not the hot dog. Yeah. Yeah, it's funny. Right before I brought it up, Carissa sent out an email reminding us of the tabletop exercise.
The time is that tomorrow?
Three to six P M.
Three?
Three, yep.
Write it down.
Yeah, before I do.
I know that'll be so much fun. I'm hoping to watch on my TV. I hope the United States.
I'll be.
You're going.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be there. I took work off tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah. It was fun though, okay. So, yeah.
Still. All righty, well, see.
Where are you going?
New Orleans.
Oh, okay.
That'll be so.
You and Carol?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's got some friends that bought a house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for the winter and then a couple other friends. They rent a place down or something.
Yeah.
It's down, I gotta come to be a little warm, but there's some notice as a charter business.
Okay. Yeah, it's hurricane territory.
One day, uh, we'll red fish, fish him.
It'll be fun.
Yep.
Safe travels.